Welcome to the county commissioner meeting this evening. It's great to see so many people here. I will go ahead and call us to order and ask Commissioner Allman to ask the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you for the freedoms that we have as Americans, Lord, that we enjoy. And thank you for just allowing us to assemble together, God. Father, I just pray that you give us discernment tonight. Lift up my fellow commissioners, help us to make good decisions. That would honor you and that would be the best for our citizens. Father God, I lift up our EMS workers, our sheriff's office, and I pray for the opioid issue that's plagued our county. Father God, I pray that you just bless our meeting tonight and help us to make the good decisions that we need to make. Praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Allman. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda this evening? If not, we'll seek a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number one tonight will be a Thank You For Your Service Day proclamation. Presenter is Register of Deeds Suzanne Lauder.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me tonight. This is just our, this is our fifth annual Thank You For Your Service program. We encourage veterans to record their DD-214s. This is one of their most important documents. This allows them, the veteran, to obtain medical care, schooling, and/or death benefits. We're proud to partner with local merchants in Stanley County and surrounding counties to celebrate and honor their service. It may be a free drink or a 10% discount, though it may not seem like much. It shows that we appreciate and support our veterans. The Register of Deeds is providing a veteran with the photo ID cards that can be used for these discounts at participating businesses. Our discount program has two primary goals: encourage veterans to register their original DD-214s and obtain benefits for the veteran through local businesses through our discount program. In conjunction with this event, we are having a silent auction and a raffle to raise money for the Stanley County Veteran Relief Fund. This funds, the funds assist veterans with emergency housing and medical needs. And I hope that you can come by the office or to the Ag Center. It's going to be December 2nd from 3:00 until 6:00, and we would appreciate your support. And the proclamation I have, do you have copies of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lauder. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Jordan.
I just want to say thank you guys for doing this. It's a great program. I know that piece of paperwork is very easy to lose, and it's very, very, very important to have.
Well, we're happy to do it.
I assume that record is kept confidential.
It is.
At the Register of Deeds.
Mm-hmm.
And they can just come by and get a copy of it anytime if they need it to.
That's right.
Very cool.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Any other comment or questions?
Yes, Ms. Lauder, you said the date's December 2nd.
At the Ag Civic Center.
Three to six.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I move we approve the proclamation.
A motion to approve the proclamation as presented by Commissioner Morgan. There was a second by Commissioner Jordan. Any other discussion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Do you need a copy of this? You want us to send you a copy?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Item number two, Board of Equalization and Review. Presenter, Mr. Swearingen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board. I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm here to get two appointments to the Board of Equalization and Review for Stanley County. The Board of Equalization Review consists of five members, and they are appointed by this board. They hear appeals for real and personal property, value appeals for the entire county, and make decisions when there's disagreements between the tax office and the actual taxpayer. There are currently two members who have terms that's going to expire December 31st of this year, and that, those members are Jerry Burlison, who's the current chairman, and Vicki Long. Both of those members have served two consecutive terms, so they've been in office for eight consecutive years, so they are not available for reappointment without taking a break first. So they have to come off. I received three volunteer applications, which I've attached in your packet, of people who have filed to serve on the Board of Equalization and Review. And upon analyzing those, I made the request that the Board of Commissioners appoint Richard S. Cosgrove and Amanda Cody to fill the two vacancies that's going to be left by Mr. Burlison and Mrs. Long. I also request, per General Statute 105-322A, that states this board has the power to name the chairman of the Board of Equalization and Review, that Mr. Cosgrove be named as the chairman. I made my selections out of the three from my request. Our revaluation coming up is January 1st of 2021, which we will obviously have more appeals at that time than we do during a normal year. Mr. Cosgrove has served eight years in the past, so he knows exactly what the Board of ENR does, what it's charged with, how the proceedings and the appeals work. And I feel very comfortable with him leading the meetings going through the revaluation period. I recommend Ms. Cody, with Mr. Burlison and Ms. Long's exit, I do not have a realtor on the Board of ENR. And I also feel that's very important, to have someone who knows the values in the county, who knows what things are worth, and I think she would be a valuable asset. These board members do get paid. They're paid $25 an hour for their services. Most times, they only meet two to three times per year, usually about two hours per meeting. So they're not making a ton of money, but they are doing a very, very valuable service for the county. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Swearingen. Are there any questions from board members? If not, I'll open to the board for nominating.
I do have a, it's not a question, it's a comment. Clinton, I respect you and your ability to manage, but I also want to, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to vote no against an individual that already serves on another board. Because I've said in the past that we need as many citizens as we can possibly get to work with us in county government. I'm sure that person, based on your recommendations, is well qualified, but I still believe that we only should appoint citizens to one board at a time. Thank you.
What, I have a question. What board?
He is an alternate, but I also know that alternates attend meetings, and they also get paid for their attendance.
All right, I'll open the floor for nominations to these two seats.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I move to nominate Richard Cosgrove and Amanda Cody.
All right, a nomination for Richard Cosgrove and Amanda Cody. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Barbie. Nomination for Shannon Maynard. There's no other choices to nominate from, so I'll close nominations. All those, you get two votes. Everybody can vote twice. We'll do it by show of hands. All those in favor of Mr. Richard Cosgrove, please raise your hand. I'm recording one vote. All those in favor of Amanda Cody, please raise your hand. I'm recording six votes. All those in favor of Shannon Maynard, please raise your hand. I'm going to record seven votes. So the two members are Amanda Cody and Shannon Maynard.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also going to need a chairman of that board. With Mr. Burlison's exit, we won't have one. So you will have Shannon Maynard, Amanda Cody, H.D. Effer Jr., Neil Center, and Jim Starnes. That's the five members that will be on that board, that you'll have to make a decision who the chairman is.
Mr. Starnes, a CPA?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I know Neil.
I will tell the board for your information, the board, Jerry Burlison was the chairman, and the board voted for Neil Center to be the vice chairman, for whatever, just for information purposes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll nominate Neil Center to be the chairman.
Another nomination for that, technically, it'll be nomination. Seeing none, I'll declare the nominations closed. All those in favor of Neil Center being chairman, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, board.
Item number three tonight is the Community Linkages to Care Grant. Presenter, Ms. Jennifer Layton.
Good evening, board. I don't know if you can hear me, I'm sorry. I'll try to speak loudly. I'm pleased to be with you again this evening. We've had a great year so far in the work we've done at the Health Department, and we're continuing to expand our work around the substance use issue that was referenced in the invocation this evening. The Community Linkages to Care Grant was made available at the beginning of October, and county health departments were the only allowable organizations to apply for that grant. And so we applied for that because it fits in with our federal grant work plan that you all approved back in September. So I'm just going to highlight some issues we've had in the community, the evidence-based solutions supported by the federal and state government, and our partner organizations, and then what the grant is going to provide. So what we have noticed in the Health, in the North, excuse me, the Stanley County Emergency Department, as well as across the state of North Carolina, is that hepatitis C rates reporting to the emergency department are skyrocketing. And if you look at this trend line, it's the same in Stanley County. And if you're curious as to why we cannot go beyond 2016, the ICD-10 code system, change the definition, so we can only compare 2016 to 2019. 2019 is not completed yet, and so we anticipate those numbers to be higher. And if you notice, the red line are county residents, but those are not the residents that reported to our local emergency department. That means they have gone somewhere else for care. The blue line highlights patients that went to our local emergency department for care and were deemed or diagnosed having hepatitis C and in need of care. Now, what's interesting about hepatitis C, like hepatitis B, is it is a virus that has the capability to live outside the body for up to three months in closed containers in good conditions. And so it means it's highly infectious, and it spreads really easily. It also really likes to spread through blood transmission. So the cost of this to our community is an average of about $90,000 per patient to receive treatment. That's the standard, the gold standard, 12-week treatment program. Over half of the hepatitis C cases in North Carolina are attributed solely to IV substance use. And the average age of patients range from ages 20 to 39, which is quite young, meaning if we don't catch the hepatitis C early, they're going to have long-term health consequences that we'll pay for on the back end. We also have rising endocarditis cases, which is interesting because this is typically a health issue that was seen in senior citizens decades ago, and now we're seeing it in younger patients. But again, you can identify the trend line is trending back up. And endocarditis is pretty significant. If the patient is so far along in their infection in the bloodstream, they have to have their heart valves replaced, and that's pretty significant surgery that has to be done. Again, we see more patients that are county residents that are being treated in hospitals outside of Stanley County than we do in Stanley County, but we're seeing both. It's also an extremely expensive condition to treat, and Dr. Jeff Murphy, the medical director for the emergency department, has expressed a desire and a need to have a prevention program, so he's not treating these patients repeatedly, and to prevent consistent patient numbers rising. So these costs are pretty staggering, and this comes from the University of North Carolina Healthcare. Typically, 10 years ago, they averaged about 10 heart valve replacement surgeries across the state annually. Now we're averaging over 100, and that's pretty significant. The average cost of treating a patient with this heart valve replacement related to endocarditis is a quarter of a million dollars. That's pretty significant. That's a lot of money. The average patient is, the average age of the patient is 33, which is very shocking, because again, it was typically seen more in senior citizens. And what's interesting is Dr. Asher Scrans, from the UNC Division of Infectious Diseases, identified through a deep dive analysis that 73% of those patients were uninsured or on Medicaid, which means that all of those costs that we just identified are absorbed by patients of private pay, individual hospitals when they write off bad debts, and also our governmental budgets, because those are patients that may or may not be able to cover their costs. And that's pretty significant. You're talking about funds that could be used for other programs that are being funneled to cover these costs. So here is the evidence-based solutions that the state encourages, as well as the federal government. Education, so education includes safer sex education, which we already do at the Health Department, safer use education, overdose prevention education, disease transmission, wound care, training, and education, safe syringe program provision, which is supported, again, by state legislation. And safe syringe programs provide proper disposal of IV drug use materials so that the diseases do not spread throughout the community. They also provide clean supplies to prevent reuse and sharing of syringes, so that they don't have infections, and provision of naloxone. We also are required to provide screenings, and we want to encourage those participants to come and get screened several times a year for HIV and hepatitis, because if we can catch it earlier, we can treat them sooner and have cure rates for hepatitis, which is great, and it will not be spread throughout the community. We also want to have referrals to care, and this is perfect, because that federal grant that we're working on right now is to iron out our referral process in our community, and we don't currently have harm reduction services available in the community, and it's encouraged by the federal grant. And so we want to be able to couch the harm reduction services in that referral process. And those referrals can include behavioral health services, treatment, recovery support services, or healthcare, food assistance, or even housing support. So the state law requires the following things. It requires syringe, proper syringe disposal per a biohazard waste company, distribution of new syringes and supplies at no cost to prevent sharing and reuse, and to reduce that spread of disease. We have to provide security plans addressing the safety of the site, the personnel, and the equipment, and that has to be provided to our local law enforcement. We have to provide referrals to behavioral health services or treatment. And we also have to provide education materials related to what I mentioned before, the prevention of disease transmission, overdose and addiction, and also the treatment options that are available at the local level, which is fantastic, because we're building a lot of those programs now. We also have to provide naloxone distribution and training, and a lot of times, we can partner with nonprofits in the state to provide access to that. So annual reporting for the state, because it is a legal program in the state, requires the following to be reported once a year, and that includes our target population, so it can include people who are IV substance users, it can include patients that are diabetic or patients that are having to inject any kind of medication, syringe disposal method, so that biohazard contract, education materials that are provided, number of unique participants or people served by this program, distribution of, the number of distribution of syringes and supplies, syringes dispensed compared to syringes returned, number of each item dispensed and returned, naloxone kits distributed, overdoses reversed in the community, and this is great, because we currently can't capture this data, referrals to treatment, and participants that do receive screenings for HIV and hepatitis. And all of these are required to be submitted to the Injury and Violence Prevention Branch once per year at the end of July, so we can track that data, and they aggregate it as a state. So this is a program that is supported by the CDC, the North Carolina Opioid Action Plan 2.0, the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and it actually is a strategy that we are encouraged to support under our Healthy Communities Addendum at the Health Department, and that is something we've been partnering with community organizations on for quite a while, trying to identify a good partner that's already serving this population. And it is supported by the Project Lazarus model, which is endorsed by the state government. And I'd just like to point out that back in October, we had a very special guest from Gaston County, Michelle Mathis, who has operated successfully a program for over 10 years in Gaston County, and she is also a pastor, and had great success at reducing the spread of disease in Gaston County and connecting people to care. And when she came and spoke to churches, she was sponsored by the North Carolina Council of Churches, we had a lot of faith organizations that stepped up and said, "We want to help support this project. We really need it in this community." So general grant info. So this grant is going to span December 2019 through August of 2022. It totals $275,000. Only health departments can apply for this funding. Our plan is to subcontract this entire grant to a community partner that's already serving this population, and that is our faith-based organization, Grace Place. They are already providing services to this population in the form of food, access to laundry services, supporting folks that are homeless in the community with hand warmers, water, snacks, hygiene supplies. They also provide some low-level case management. They've actually placed 16 people in 2018 into treatment, and they've transported patients that tested positive for hepatitis to Charlotte for care. So they were already providing these services. This is, this program is designed to expand what they're already doing just a little bit further. So here's our budget, and this is a total of the entire 33 months. I laid it out like I did the last time I came to see you in September. So for personnel and training, for their program coordinator, who works an average of about 30 to 35 hours a week at $15 an hour, and this includes our fringe, it's $77,160.60 for the entire grant period. The assistant program coordinator, the church had asked that we be able to hire someone that could work 15 to 20 hours a week to support this, to support this person in the event they were sick or they had a lot of participants to serve. So it's totaling $33,436.26 over the course of the three-year grant. We also are hoping to identify a peer outreach worker, six months to a year into this project, to be able to go out and provide peer-to-peer education out in the community. We are required by this grant to have technical assistance provided by the Queen's Medical Exchange, and they will be providing technical assistance, onsite training, to inventory tracking, as well as the data collection the state requires, and how to provide good care. We also incorporated mileage, because they are already transporting patients or participants to Susan Medical Care in Charlotte. So we incorporated mileage at the 58 cents per mile that's required by the state, and estimating maybe 500 miles a month. That, we were trying to give them some wiggle room there, so that totals $9,570. And then our budget for our program supplies, they have a feeding program right now at their church, and the church stated that if we could help offset some of their costs with the feeding program and supporting folks in our community that are homeless, they could buy all the supplies that are not allowed by this grant. So we, they are able to actually get the food cost and paper products per person to an average of a dollar per person. They serve about 60 to 70 people per day, five days a week, and so that totals $42,117 over the course of the grant. Safe syringe program supplies. So allowable supplies include things like Band-Aids, alcohol, pads, cottons, tourniquets, biohazard waste containers, want to make sure they're keeping their sharps in a safe container and they're not exposing other people. I'm trying to think of what else we have to incorporate. Sterile water. We cannot purchase with this grant syringes, cookers, fentanyl test strips, or naloxone, and the church stepped up and said, "Those are critical items, and if you can help with the food piece, we'll cover the pieces that are not allowed in the grant," which was fantastic. We've also included large sharps containers that could be placed in public locations if needed, because they are being identified out in the community as being improperly disposed in the trash cans, in ditches, in parks, in public bathrooms, and so we incorporated those as well. Our biohazard waste disposal contract for the entire grant is around $1,900. And for non-permanent housing supplies, so again, that could be water, it could be hygiene supplies, it could be hand warmers in the wintertime, or toboggans, or scarves, we allocated $5,500 to that line item. And then we also incorporated incentives for HIV and hepatitis screening, which is done in Charlotte, and it's very successful at getting participants to be screened. For anyone that is a participant in the program, if they go have a screening done for HIV hepatitis, they're given $5 cash when they come back and show their paperwork. And that encourages them to get screened at least twice a year. They can only get reimbursed, or get that incentive twice a year. So we allocated $5,500 for the entire life of the grant. And then for operational equipment, utilities for the site, because we are supporting the church in their work, we wanted to offset some of their utility costs, and I think we estimated around $600 a month, which totaled $19,800 total. They needed some office equipment, so locking filing cabinets for participant information, shredder to make sure that no identifying information to patients was shared or accessible to other people, a laptop for appropriate data collection, a printer, and a locking storage cabinet, a large locking storage cabinet. We are also going to incorporate printer paper and ink for unnecessary forms to be printed, that's $2,470. And our storage equipment, which also included some large shelving units to store large boxes that were heavy, as well as some of those locking cabinets, were $925. So all in total, we totaled up $275,000. Any questions? That's the quick version.
Any questions from board members?
I do have a couple.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned Grace Place.
Yes, sir.
Where is it located?
They are located, it was formerly Tabernacle United Methodist Church, so it's situated between, I think that's Main Street and Highway 73. So if you know where JR's Guns is located, there's a Methodist church down the street, and that's where they're located. And they've been providing services for over a year, maybe two years now.
And you said the services they provide, or what?
They provide a feeding program, they provide support for homeless people in our community that cannot stay in the shelter. They also provide some low-level case management to place people into various levels of care, behavioral health, medical care, connecting them to housing if they need, like the shelter or food assistance, things of that nature.
Do you know if they work with local Christian ministries, Homes of Hope?
Yes.
I mean, we've got a lot of agencies out there.
Yes. So they, the great thing about what they were doing was they saw a gap, and so they're serving a population that can't be served in other ways, because they don't meet the criteria. And so they've done their homework in terms of making sure they're not duplicating work, and that was a question that we had as well. We do not want to waste resources, they're precious. Yes, sir.
And how the candidates for this money, how will they be selected?
So people that come in for services, it's just anyone that needs services. So it could be anyone in the community that needs to dispose properly of these supplies or access clean supplies. They have to be enrolled per the state law, and so they have to have an ID card developed, they have, we have to track, you know, the services they're receiving, just like you would in a clinic. If you imagine a medical clinic, they have to have a file and keep track of that participant, almost like a patient. And they communicate with them as often as they need support. The nice thing is, is we're able to use this program to funnel them into other support services, like the peer support services provided by Monarch, or connect them to Wheels Place for recovery support services, or placement into detox or treatment, if that's what they need at the moment. This is to keep them safe and keep the community safe until we can get them there.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
33-month grant, correct?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
These associates that you're talking about hiring?
Yes.
What happens on month 34?
So we've already had that conversation with the church. The nice thing about this project is we are building on a program they already have, we're just giving some extra funding to build out the project. They already have plans to expand their funding, whether it be through foundations, whether it be through fundraising on their own, but they have a lot of support from our local churches. So a lot of local churches support these programs, they just aren't confident in taking it on themselves, but they're happy to help support another church develop the project. And we've had quite a few already step up and say, "We're happy to partner and help support anyone we can." Does that answer your question?
Any other questions or comments?
And that was a short version, thank you.
You asked for a shorter version, so I worked on it.
We had to hear the long version at the health meeting.
We had to hear the long version at the health meeting. Y'all got the clip notes.
Yeah.
It was great. Thank you. I should have, I should have asked this before. About how many patients do you hope this program can serve? I mean, you know, it could be, you know, X amount of people over three, over three years, or it could be the same X people for three years.
Yep.
What do you forecast in your imagination?
So, we were taking, we were taking a guess because we don't have the program yet here. We did communicate with Cabarrus Health Alliance. They are a much more metropolitan area compared to Stanley County. They're already serving 12 participants from Stanley County there, and they've been in communication with us all year saying, "If you can get a program running, we'd like to refer them back to your county so they have closer services." We were projecting an average of 70 to 100 participants per month, but that was just a projection. We really won't know until six months to a full year in to know how many people we're seeing.
In terms of revenue, you broke everything out, you know, into categories.
Yes.
Are you breaking that out? Are you rationing that per year?
Oh, yes.
So, you can't accidentally blow through your $5,000 in print supplies first?
I'm glad you asked because the state required that we limit the total amount per year. So, that first, hold on a minute, let me see what I got here. The first six months were limited to 50,000, and then, the second 24 months annually were limited to, I think, 150, no, I'm sorry, I have 100,000 here. And then, that last little piece, that three months, is 25. So, it totals 275. Yes, we had to play the numbers game to make the budget work.
That you got it worked correctly.
Yes.
Ms. Chairman, one more question. Who's going to manage the funds?
So, we are the fiduciary agent as the Health Department because we are the only allowable organization to apply. So, the nice thing is, is there's some accountability there, and we actually had a meeting with the Injury and Violence Prevention Branch today, and they said that's why they require health departments to be the ones to oversee these programs, is because there's more accountability. And so, one of our staff members on staff will be meeting with their program coordinator at least once a month to make sure the data collection is being done correctly and they are reporting correctly the way the state law requires, and to providing technical support they might need. And again, they'll be partnering with our local coalition as well as some of our other partners on the federal grant. So, they won't be hanging out there to dry. They'll be partnering with us and getting a lot of support.
And this grant.
Yes, sir.
Has already been awarded, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
We had a very short turnaround time between applying, notification, yeah.
Any other questions? Comments?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
As far as this needle exchange program, I guess I'm more old-fashioned, so this kind of rubs me the wrong way when we are doing this for these folks, but yet, we have elderly, we have people who have serious health issues that need these, and we're doing it for these folks here. Is there a limit, amount, like, can they just keep coming back for three years and a needle a day, or I just have a hard time with this program?
So, the state law does not allow you to limit anyone's access to services. Like I said, it can be, it's not just for folks that are in active substance use. It could be folks that are using insulin or other medications that need a place to properly dispose because a lot of these materials are ending up in the landfill or in trash cans, which puts hazard, excuse me, occupational or our local waste management crews at risk for accidental sticks. We want to make sure we have proper disposal. So, it's open to anyone. It's not just people with substance use disorders. I want to be very clear.
Okay. So, anybody that comes?
Absolutely. Can come. So, if I have a family member that has diabetes and doesn't have a proper place to dispose of those syringes, I could take those to that place, and they would, you know, they would put them in their larger collection, and it would be disposed of through a biohazard waste company.
Now, would they also be able to receive?
Yes. Yes, yes, absolutely. Because other, other programs across the state have built similar models based out of churches, and they've had great success, especially rural communities because that's going to be your key partners. But they've had great relationships in terms of partnerships and also being very open to who can receive services. They don't want to, we don't want to leave anyone out that might need care because we can provide referrals to various levels of care, whether it be medical or behavioral health or otherwise.
Anything else? No, we'll seek a motion to accept the funding. Motion from Commissioner Jordan to accept the funding and the amount of $275,000 for the second from Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Layden.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Item number four on the agenda tonight is a property conveyance to the Stanley County Historical Society. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Per discussions that we've had regarding the historic houses, we've been working with the Historic Society on sort of partnerships to convey those houses to them. And so, per North Carolina General Statute 168-279, in order to convey those houses along with the associated real property, to the Historic Society, the board must adopt a resolution within the package approving the conveyance. We also must publish a notice, which we'll do after the board approves the conveyance, and we can't convey the property any sooner than the 10 days of the public notice. And it'll take a little more time than that because we're working through the process of the getting it surveyed and titled, and whether it's a warranty vehicle or non-tuity vehicle, still working through that. But it all has to be done through the legal process in itself. It'll be closer to December 30th, 40th. It's always been a 10-day notice. There's no public hearing required. It's just we have to provide a notice that we're going to convey these real properties. The resolution's there. Board and board consider for that conveyance. And as you know, there'll be a subsequent budget amendment when we do this, and we'll get closer to the date of the ratcheting of the date once the legal work is done, which will account for the dollars that were exchanged to help them sort of get on sound footing to do the conveyance of this project, which is a flood of $40,000 in resource for the Historic Society, and that is for some various things to help them get started and take care of immediate needs for their houses. We'll see that most likely either the December 2nd, I mean, the December 2nd agenda, or potentially January 6th, the agenda. Yes, I will move to January 6th, but you haven't set that, you haven't set the January meeting date until December. I'd be happy to answer that.
Questions? Any questions for the county manager? No, we'll seek a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr.?
Go ahead.
Mr.?
Go ahead. I move that we approve the resolution to convey the Marks and Bullock Council.
A motion by Commissioner Morgan to approve the resolution pursuant to General Statute 168-279, second by Commissioner Almond. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, no. Motion carries seven to zero. That brings us to the consent agenda this evening. There are no questions or comments about the consent agenda. We'll seek a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Almond to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lawhan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Brings us to public comment. I have two folks signed up tonight. Ms. Julie Burris, I believe.
Good evening. My name is Julie Burris, and I'm a contractor with Stanley County Home Health for over 10 years and have been an occupational therapist for over 20 years. Having worked for numerous large companies, I believe in homegrown businesses. The individuals that work for Stanley County Home Health are compassionate about our patients. We have joined together to purchase wheelchairs, food, and other items for our families. You don't find that at other agencies. Also, I would like the commissioners to know that the topic of selling the agency was not on the public online agenda for last week's health meeting. I've been told by some employees that the contractors were not to be informed that it would be presented at last week's meeting. But in order to be proactive after finding out this information, I initiated my own LLC license to begin my own therapy company in Stanley County. I believe individuals in Stanley County deserve the option to choose pediatric home health services from Stanley County-based agency. I also know the option of reducing the per diem rate for contract staff has not been visited. $10 per visit rate reduction from just the visits I completed this month would provide over $1,000 savings per month. You multiply that by 17 contractors, that's over $200,000 a year. This money could be used to pay for many additional nurses if this truly is an issue. Also, I personally provided names of interested nurses with no follow-up initiated. In conclusion, I believe the agency can thrive financially if these and other options are visited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burris.
Thank you.
Another speaker, Chris Burris.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'd like to start off by commending the Stanley County Home Health Agency. They are the only five-star rated agency in our county that provides therapeutic and nursing services to its citizens. There's nobody that even comes close to them. And I would, I would ask that you guys do a little bit of research. Find out what it takes to obtain that five-star rating. The Home Health Agency has been around since before I was born, 1975. April of 1975 is when we opened, or is when they opened. I don't even work for the company. However, I'm passionate about ensuring that our citizens, especially considering we are talking about the most vulnerable of our citizens in our community, the people who can't go out, the single mom who can't get their child, has no method of getting their child to see a doctor, to receive the therapeutic services they need. You know, what, what are we saying to them when we sell this home health agency to, to one of the bigger competitors? So, let's say we proceed and we sell this certificate of need to, to one of the larger competitors. I'm not trying to advertise for them, so I'm not naming any names. What is their goal in obtaining something that they already have? You know, what is the goal of, of the commission to, to, you know, take 50, whatever the, I understand it will probably come down to a bidding process. So, you know, if you take the hospital, they've already got their certificate of need. However, I guarantee you, they will be one of the highest bidders, one of the, they'll all bid high, I have no doubt. But what, what is their goal? Look at what their goal is here in obtaining this certificate of need. You know, considering they already have it, the way I see it, their only reason for obtaining it is to stifle any potential competition that may be sitting around out in the county trying to provide these services at a lower rate than they already are. That said, I've got a prepared statement, and I'm not going to go through all of this, but, you know, I took it upon myself to go out to the county commissioner's website. You know, you guys have 10 goals listed out there on that website. I'm not sure if any of you have taken the time to read it, but I'm going to go through a couple of them real quick. Goal number two, ensure public safety, health, and wellness. Goal number seven, this is a big one, enhance services that allow for aging in place and improve access to public transportation. Goal number eight, protect assets, minimize risk, leverage the use of technology to improve organizational productivity. Goal 10, and this is where my wife, my wife was just speaking about on the Health and Human Services Committee, that, that it wasn't even on the agenda that this was even being discussed. So, there's something secret going on here, and I don't understand the point of it. Why all the secrecy when we're supposed to be transparent? I won't take up any more of your time. I understand I'm just about out, but, but I would ask that you sincerely consider how it's going to impact the most vulnerable of our citizens before we proceed to sell the home health agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. Is there anybody else? I know sometimes folks don't know, you have to sign up to speak. Is there anybody else that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to Commissioner comments. I'll start with Commissioner Lawhan tonight.
I don't have a comment tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan. Thank you. Commissioner Barbie.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Commissioner Fur.
Some more questions, guys.
All right. Commissioner Almond.
Got one quick thing. Ashley and I were at the airport meeting last Wednesday, and they've got a new set of LED lights on the runway. If you get a chance to ride by there at night, you need to check it out. They're really awesome, and they're doing a lot of good things at the airport.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
And I'll just add to Commissioner Almond's comment is the airport is now open. The airport's been closed for the last month with the runway, so it is back open.
Thank you. And I don't have any comment tonight either. Is there anything from county staff? All right. If not, I'll seek a motion to re-enter closed session in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A6 to discuss a personnel issue. Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, second by Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposing, no. Motion carries seven to zero.